Now?
One minute.
Now? Good evening and welcome to the September 18th Regular Board Meeting of the Oyster River School Board. I would like to begin by approving the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
So moved.
In a second, Brian. Does anyone have any changes for the agenda? I actually do have one. At the end, I don't know if this is important, but it has non-public then non-meeting. I'm going to switch those. So we'll do the non-meeting first, then the non-public. Yes. Does anyone else? Any thoughts? Okay. So we'll vote on the motion as amended. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor. None opposed. All right. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one. I will move to approval of the minutes from September 4th. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? Denise?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 4th.
Thank you. In a second, Gianna. Does anyone have any notes or corrections for those minutes? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the motion. Six in favor, none opposed. All right. We'll move to announcements from the district.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, DIJ Director for the District. I just have a few school board announcements. First, our DIJ Community Group Meeting is happening Monday, September 20th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM in the high school library. So we'll be doing those series of meetings again. And we'll continue to meet on a monthly basis. So if folks need more information about meetings or anything like that, that's on our website. Additionally, we held our first multicultural and pride student spaces this week. They started at the high school. And so we actually had a few new kids show up from last year, which was really great for both groups. And we'll be holding those bi-weekly throughout the semester during flex periods. We'll also be doing some parent and caregiver support spaces. This is from last year. We tried to do a parent caregiver support space of LGBTQ plus youth. And it was... Sorry. Okay.
Please go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
So from that meeting, it was expressed that this is a community that they would like to do again and have a space. So we're going to continue those meetings. This year, I'll be holding two a semester. And I'll be doing it for parents and caregivers of LGBTQ plus youth, and then also of multicultural students in the district. And so the parent caregiver support spaces of multicultural youth will be held Monday, October 21st, and Monday, December 9th. And that will be in the high school library from 6:00 to 7:30. And then the parent caregiver support space for LGBTQ plus students, that's going to be on Tuesday, October 22nd, and Wednesday, December 11th, same time and place. More information can be found on the district website. I've been working with Jen Brown to put this on there. And that's it. Those are all my announcements. Any questions? Yeah?
I'm sorry. I'm really slow today. You said the DIJ Community Meeting was on...
It's going to be on Monday, September 20th, from...
So the 20th is Friday? Because today's the 18th?
Oh, I probably meant the 30th then, because the 30th is a Monday. Yeah, I apologize. I had a typo. Yeah, so the 30th. Any other questions? Awesome. Oh?
Sorry. I hit the wrong button. For the committee, is it the same folks that were on the committee the last time, or have you reorganized it, or...
Yes. Yeah, so I sent out an email to our original committee group that's been within the group throughout the years. But I actually just sent out an email today to faculty and staff in the district, because I recognize we hired a lot of new people. And so I'm like, if you're interested in supporting this work, we'd love to have you. And so I'm waiting to see if I get anyone with interest. But yes, same folks as usual.
Cool. That's great, though. Thanks.
Awesome. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other district announcements? Okay. Any board announcements? Brian?
Me and a few others here went to Dr. Shapps' Community Conversations at Massway School. I believe that was last week. Excellent. It was the second one that I've been to. I know Denise has been to both of them. I think, Gianna, I think you were both at both of them. And went really, really well. I think you're ingratiating yourself into the district is going well. I think it was a great reception. You talked about the good, you talked about the bad, and, you know, what we can do to make this district better. An already great district even greater. And to let everyone know, if you have a chance to get to one, anybody listening has an opportunity to get to one, doesn't matter what school it's at, it's open to everybody. I know we have some coming up at the middle and the high school, and Mohairamet coming up, I believe. So I know that's on the district website, if I'm not mistaken. So... But it went great. And I thank Dr. Shapps for taking the time to do it. And keep it... I hope the rest are just as successful as the first two yet.
Any other board announcements? Okay, excellent. The Assistant Superintendent?
Just a few announcements. I am going to remind everybody about the community dinner that is on October 10th. It's from 5:00 to 6:30. And following the community dinner is the high school open house. And this is a wellness committee community dinner. We have about 15 different agencies coming and setting up booths to educate our, you know, each other about what's out there for resources. We also met, but I'm going to leave that report up to Kelly, to talk about what we discussed at our wellness committee meeting. Sustainability has their first committee meeting on October 3rd. It's a Thursday. And also just a reminder that ICAC is going to be coming on October 28th. And that presentation will be here at the middle school. And the K-9 is expected to be there. I know he wasn't able to be there last night, but we expect to have the K-9 there. And we'll be pushing out some information about that. And Jen is always extremely helpful in getting that information out to the community. And we will be notifying local... As we did last time, we pushed it out to other school districts to let people know, so that they can, you know, inform their families. And we will be doing the same this time as well. I have a memo in your packet regarding House Bill 1014, which was passed, requiring districts to use the holidays that are statutorily designated and use the names that were listed in RSA 288. So we have one holiday on our calendar that we will be changing to Columbus Day from Indigenous Peoples' Day. Denise?
Question about that. Is it possible to have both names? I know we have to have Columbus Day, but is there a way that we can still possibly also...
So in the conversation, in looking at the way that it's written, it may be possible to have both, but it's not... Technically, we're supposed to have it as it's written in 288, which is Columbus Day. There's no Indigenous Peoples' Day. So technically, we're supposed to just have Columbus Day. But we can...
Certainly, as Suzanne was about to say, I mean, certainly, we can confer with legal counsel, but I think at this point, we're moving forward consistent with the bill and our expectations of what the law states.
Can we refer to it as Indigenous Peoples' Day?
So it says that it needs to be... Any documents, publications, communications have to use Columbus Day.
So I promptly read the RSAs when I saw that. And so, yeah, I agree, we're a little stuck on that one. For that one, if you want it actually to be corrected, well, not corrected, but altered to be Indigenous Peoples' Day, I would contact your local representative to change the statute.
Thank you very much. Superintendent?
Yes. Certainly, to begin my report, I just want to say that it's continued the opportunity to visit schools and observe classroom and the learning that's happening across the system. It's been really promoting great conversations with teachers and administrators just about, you know, the first few weeks of school and the routines of, I would say, our classrooms, and just a lot of excitement and joy and learning. So we'll continue to make that a priority in terms of my entry plan and really getting a sense of classroom experiences from kindergarten through grade 12. And so it's been great. I wanted to just give the board the committee update. We continue to work with our architectural partners, Nova Studio, and they're making, what I would say, good progress on the three major projects: the Massway Cafeteria Expansion Project, the Mohairamet Classroom Expansion Project, and our Building Needs Assessment Audit. I know, I believe at this point, they've completed their, I would say, physical review of the buildings, or in the process of putting together a draft report. So I think the overall message is they're on track in terms of the deliverable dates. This Friday, we'll have the first, what I think of two opportunities to really focus on educational visioning. And I know in watching the board's work this spring, there was comments and talk about the idea of considering reconfiguration as one of many options around dealing with the pressures of space utilization and enrollment. So this Friday, I hope our administrative group, along with the principals, will meet with the architectural team and focus on two guiding questions. One is to consider any significant educational and financial benefits to reconfiguring how our schools are organized. So can we think about, from an educational standpoint, the benefits of thinking differently about the organization or configuration of grades? The second, what school design facility issues or opportunities are relevant or and/or critical to the organization and delivery of teaching and learning? So making the connection to say, given our school buildings and given our purposes and our aims, how would we think about creating those conditions within the buildings in a broader view of space utilization, of what we would want for schools if we were going to go forward with considering a reconfiguration down the road? So it's moving away from just saying, let's add classrooms because of enrollment pressures, and saying, how do we kind of think, you know, of our educational philosophy, our values, and how would both configuration, that is, grade level assignment to schools, plus design of facilities, really play into and align with what we want students to experience in teaching and learning? So that kind of frees us from, I would say, some limitations around just thinking, this is a mathematical equation about space and enrollment, and allows us to say, as we think about learning in the next few decades, what are some of the things that we wouldn't want to consider about space? And, you know, small spaces, large spaces, group spaces, nooks, outdoor learning, and how that comes into place. So that work will begin on Friday. Most likely, we'll continue with a follow-up session, and that will be part of our report to the board. That will be included in the Building Needs Assessment project. I don't know if you have any questions? Part of what we've tried to do is accumulate historical enrollment data. We went back to 1955 to look at our, the pattern of enrollment change for this district at the K-5 level. Just trying to say, if things ever got to the highest level of enrollment at some point in pattern, I think, in the 1990s, what would that mean around space utilization? So how do we, you know, kind of look at our schools in the context of peak enrollment historically and say, what does that mean overall? And it has been an interesting up and downs kind of pattern of enrollment over the history of the school system. My second announcement is next week, we will, from next Monday forward to the end of the month, really prioritize our focus on budget development. Our administrators, we have a series of meetings across with our directors, our principals, to really form on the, I think, the first crack at the budget, our draft budget. And so it's really, at this point, it's interesting for me, as a new superintendent, here we are, launching to the school year, and we already have one foot into next year. And so how do we stay present at the moment, but also start to prioritize plans for, I would say, the articulation or educational plan through a financial lens going forward? As Brian mentioned, I will continue with the series of community conversations next Tuesday on September 24th at 7:00 PM at the middle school. I will invite parents to engage in a conversation. And that will be followed by a meeting, a conversation at the high school and Mohairamet School. Jen Brown, Director of Communications, and I are putting the final touches on a virtual alumni conversation, I think, will take place on October 18th. We're trying to reach broadly out there to our Oyster River alum and encourage them to participate in that same conversation, trying to get their perspectives. We talked about maybe dividing it by graduating years, but I think at this point, we'll go forward to do that all as one large group. And that's really my report right now. I think the next portion of the superintendent's report is to invite Catherine and Rachel to come up and just continue to summarize our administrative work plan for the year. As you recall, last, in our last meeting, principals really shared our plan from the elementary, middle, and high school. At this point, we wanted to continue, and I'll invite Catherine to come up to talk about student sports services goals and initiatives and eventual outcomes. Thank you, Catherine.
Do I have to push a button? Am I on? Okay. Hi. Hi, everybody. Catherine Ploor, Director of Student Services. I'll just take a few minutes and review the goals for student services that we've discussed within our department. Some of these, I've talked with you as board members about in the past, so they're probably not super surprising when you see them. The first goal, really talking about meeting individualized educational needs, including therapeutic support in a least restrictive environment. And part of the reason for this, as we move forward, is really looking at students who need something different, need a different environment, need some skill-based teaching, and some more therapeutic supports within a school setting, but not necessarily having to leave the school community to access that. So when we think about least restrictive environment, what we value in that is really building programs where kids can stay in their community, but maybe have a different environment within that community to get some support. And so, you know, our goal is to look at essential components of a program for middle school and high school, really looking at evidence-based practices for students, visiting potential programs, so we can see what currently exists. We have had students attend programs locally. And so looking at the key factors within those that have been successful, and hearing from our colleagues how they've created programs, and then seeking out the requirements for program approval. So looking at how we make sure that whatever program we develop is approved by the Department of Education. So the goal ultimately is to have an in-district program that is a little bit different, within a little bit different environment, but for students still to be able to access courses in the high school or the middle school, if that's appropriate for them. But then alternative ways of learning, learning through the community, learning, doing more job-oriented and ELO-type alternative learning. So that's really the goal of this. Any questions about that one? Yes?
So I don't have a question, but just, I really appreciate that focus on building capacity internally, because there's so much research out there about the value of students being with their same-aged peers and in, you know, similar situations and all of that. That is really great, and it speaks to what we want to be as Oyster River. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you. We agree. Okay, moving on to the next one. Increasing parent engagement in and understanding of the child's overall educational programming. So each year, we have a parent survey, and typically, it's not a lot of people respond to the survey, but the feedback that we do get from parents through this survey informally is very positive. But there's areas that parents have really asked for help around. And so we've determined that we'd like to create a parent series, identifying topics of interest, so serving some families and seeing what they would be interested in. We did do some of this work last year, and we do have some parent series trainings already ready to go, past things that we have done and created. So just identifying those areas in need. And then that will help parents just to have a better understanding of our system, what's available, how to be engaged, how to advocate for their child, and then understanding the overall special education process in general. So we're not going to limit everything in the parent series to just special education per se, but other things. I've had parents say, I really need parenting support for my child. How do I access that? Because supports are so limited outside of the school district. So how do we bring in our school psychologists and a couple teachers to work together about, you know, how they provide structure, how they provide support? And so that would be that second goal. Yes?
So would that initially be offered to the families already in the special education program, or is that more broadly based?
Broadly based, yeah. It's always great to have a group that, of people who want to attend and want to be there, and you don't have to have a student with a disability. We all, as parents, struggle with some similar things, and we want parents to come together on that. Okay, so my last goal is students will meet their individual education goals to make progress in access to a general education curriculum. For many years, we've been focusing on literacy and working with our staff to increase their professional development on specialized reading instruction. So we've done a lot of training and a variety of programs and methodologies. And now it's really time to start looking at shifting to math and writing in a very structured and comprehensive way. And we have started down the road with math a bit, with the support of Suzanne and some professional development she has provided for teachers. And so now it's really taking a look at what other methodologies we want to have training for, for special education staff. In general, ed teachers are invited as we do this as well. Our tutors, certainly, we invite them when we do any sort of intervention-based training. Our goal, again, is looking at programs that are highly research-based, have good research behind them, so that we know that programming we're using with students has a lot of value. Also, assessment data that we collect is closely linked to the targets for the student, and making sure we're measuring the correct targets for the student to determine if we're making progress. So, you know, looking at evidence-based programs, K-8, identifying for both math and writing, developing a professional development structure. So this is important, of course, for us to develop a plan, both for the budget, but also for... This is not a one-and-done thing. It takes some time to build capacity amongst a large staff, and there's differing needs depending on the grade level that you're working with. So ultimately, teachers will have been trained in a variety of methodologies. They'll be able to choose a program or use something that is more closely tied to the strengths of a student. And that's the other important thing, is how does a student best learn? Let's make sure that we're reaching them in that way and using their strengths so that they're engaged and make better progress. So this will help them to meet graduation requirements. And also, these skills that we're teaching them are good in whatever choice they have moving on from high school. So it's not just for students who are, obviously, we're looking at college-bound, but in the workforce, in the military, whatever their choice is. We want kids to have really solid, basic reading, math, and writing skills. Any questions about that one? Of course.
So we're, you know, with the adoption of Eureka squared and the work that they're doing on the writing standards, K through 5, is there some cross-pollination that can happen with that? Is this sort of a nice time to do that because of the timelines for those adoptions, or is this a very different thing?
Both. So there are some students who need that, that crossover and that supplemental piece, and there are some students who need very different. And I think we do a great job with the crossover because of some of that training that our teachers have had with Eureka Math, and what are the components of it that have been difficult for a student? How can we reteach that? How we can use more manipulatives? How can we use more of that kinesthetic learning? But then there's the piece that's very different. And some language-based programs do not work for students. So how do we provide a scope and sequence for that student, so they're developing those skills, without always having to, you know, rely on something that's harder for them? The biggest part of this, though, is we never abandon the Tier 1 curriculum. We always need to kind of be aligned with and keep them going. Once you abandon a curriculum, you've made a choice that they're not going to be on grade level. So it's really important that we're looking at programming that is helping with those skills that are deficits, at the same time continuing to work on those areas that are with their grade-level peers. Yeah, and that becomes an IEP team decision. There are times we do have to make that choice for particular students, but that's with parent involved and an IEP team, if we really have to look at something very different for a number of years.
The ELA Committee that we will be putting together to look at the programming will include special education.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine.
Know where I am.
I'd like to invite Rachel up to just summarize the goals for DIJP.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, DIJ Director. I have a few goals for you all today. The first one, I am hoping to really support the middle school and the high school, and that is cultivating a positive school culture. In particular, this year's initiatives, I'm hoping to meet with and support the middle school in their work to strengthen and prioritize meaningful adult and student interactions and relationships, and just building an overall positive school culture. And then also collaborating with the high school and middle school leadership in implementing restorative and educational interventions for students in response to incidents of bias, discrimination, bullying, anything identity-related. And eventually, we would hope this would help decrease in office referrals and appropriate behavior and disciplinary actions, and an increase in trusted relationships between students and adults, and also just an overall connectedness to the school community and school culture. school culture. Any questions for that one? Awesome. Moving on to Goal 2, so I've actually been talking with Dr. Shapps around what are the goals of DEI in this district? How's it going to look moving forward? And I think we both agreed that we kind of need a DEI reset, and looking at what is belonging? How do we increase that in the district? I think over the years, DEI, even if that is, you know, a part of belonging, I think it's become a really polarizing term for a lot of people. But I think belonging, everyone wants a place to belong, right? Everyone wants to feel a sense of belonging, and we know that there's multiple data and studies that show an improved sense of belonging in a place is going to increase in better mood, better academics, all of those things. And so that's something that we really want to focus on this year. And with that, I would like to establish a belonging committee, and it will be a group of teachers and staff representatives from each school, and we are going to read and study and discuss the book Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity by Floyd Cobb and John Crownapple. We're hoping that this book is going to lead us through how to really institutionalize this and how to really build in culture shifts and how we think about what does belonging mean and how can this look like as a plan moving forward in our district. And so eventually, we would hope that this committee could develop a multi-year plan, because, you know, culture shifts are going to take a while, right? And so we're hoping to develop maybe a multi-year plan that's going to prioritize and increase a sense of belonging throughout the system, right? So starting kind of with teachers and staff and faculty, administration, and then hopefully that support will also filter out with the students as well. Any questions for that? Okay. Goal 3, we are going to look at implementing recruitment and hiring practices to attract and hire a diverse staff. In particular, I would say really trying to look at faculty. We have been making a lot of great strides in terms of trying to diversify and attract a diverse staff for staff positions, facilities, things of that nature, but I do think that perhaps faculty can be an element that we're looking at. And so this year, we're hoping to research some diverse recruitment and screening and selection and hiring best practices to see what we can work with, what can we really implement into our annual hiring practices, and identify strategies that could be used, and see how we fare with it. So I don't think we're going to overhaul our whole hiring system, but I do think that we're going to identify some really good strategies to just try out, to see how it works, and to have, I think, a bit more systemized hiring practice across the board, right? So eventual outcomes, we would hope that using best practices or standardizing a process for district recruitment, screening, and selection and hiring, and then also increasing retention efforts that would allow for us to sustain those new and existing staff and faculty in the district. And I do want to clarify, when I say diverse, I don't just mean race. I do mean a variety of different identities. I think race is a big element, but I do think we need to look at our demographics. Like, I was talking to someone the other day, thinking about elementary school teachers, and how many times you don't see a lot of male teachers in those roles, right? So what would it look like to attract and retain male elementary school teachers, right? So I want us to expand our ideas of diversity and what that could look like for our district. Any, yep?
So is this a goal for you, or is this something you're going to be working on with, say, HR directors or administrators who are on these hiring committees? How do we see the development throughout the year? Is this sort of just a you project at the moment?
No. So this is going to be a collaborative effort. I have met with Jen Horton, our HR director, and we were talking through some different strategies. She's seen implemented some different things I've been thinking about, and we actually took some notes and stuff, and we're hoping to meet with Dr. Shapps soon to, you know, pave a way forward to see what potentially, like, anti-bias training could look like, or even unseen name viewing for, like, resumes and stuff like that. So just thinking forward about, like, what we could use just across the board.
So if I could just add to it, and I appreciate that, it is going to be a collaboration, as Rachel mentioned. Certainly, in my last role, we really emphasized that and worked with both HR, our administrators, developed a standardized protocol. So before we would begin any search process, there was a series of steps that we would take, strategies that we would employ, and then really measure the impact relative to the process and seek feedback. Similarly, I think we talked about this focus on retention. So how do we interview and talk to current staff to understand the conditions that they're working under and experiencing, and take that as data to continue supporting people over time? But I think, as Rachel mentioned, looking at best practices, testing out and trying that at the start of the hiring process, and seeing the impact overall. And that may be training that everyone participates in in order to be part of the process. It's about how we can look at screening differently, as Rachel mentioned, and several other ideas, how we partner with universities and advertise openings in different places where it's typical. All of the above is what we're intending to do.
Any other questions about this goal? Awesome. Moving forward, I will also be exploring the district-wide belonging competencies. So we actually did some really great summer work with a group of teachers from each building, where we went over draft, potentially, DEIJ competencies. I think we're going to call them belonging competencies. But reviewing them and seeing what makes sense to them, what would work, thinking about, does this language fit well? Would this resonate with other faculty, things of that nature? So going into this year, I'm hoping to do some curriculum work with teachers, just in terms of getting their ideas, seeing about, do these competencies make sense to you? Do we feel like we're meeting some of these things in our own curriculum right now? Where are some gaps? And I think that's going to better help us fine-tune them and be able to craft something really great for our district. So this year, I am hoping to meet with teachers at each building, at each grade level, to introduce and discuss the drafted belonging competencies, and then identify the curriculum areas where faculty are fulfilling the proposed competencies and areas for growth. And eventually, I would hope that belonging, these belonging competencies would work together alongside our other district competencies and models, so counseling, SEL, social studies, sustainability, to hopefully promote holistic teaching practices and student success and wellbeing. Yeah?
Two things first, as far as, it sounds like some of these would dovetail with the vision of a graduate, right? Some of the same types of goals. And secondly, I'm just wondering about, in terms of the belonging committee and the group that you currently have working, are, do you see those as, you know, part of the same or distinct, I guess, groups of people?
Yeah, definitely. I would say that there can probably be some crossover or overlap, but I would say that mostly, I view a lot of the work that we do in the DIJ community group as community-centered, and thinking about how are we learning together, building relationships with one another, and also touching points in the community in terms of equity and belonging. And I think within this belonging cohort that I'm hoping to have, it's more thinking for our district, where is the plan of kind of how we want to implement belonging within the district? Does that make sense? I'm sure we will have some overlap with teachers, though, in the DIJ community group. Yeah.
So with the belonging competencies, is that something that you would see maybe going to the point where teachers would, you know, grade the students on, you know, fulfilling some of that? So maybe something like the habits of learning, you know, kind of evaluations that students are graded on at this point? Or is it just more programmatic, curriculum-wide type thing?
Yeah. So I would say at this moment, I'm not seeing anything in terms of grading. I think it's going to just add a bit more structure for teachers to be able to think about, like, oh, am I doing this in my curriculum already? What are some things that I could think about in terms of equity and belonging to integrate into my practices and things of that nature? So I think about it more as a teaching tool versus something that we're going to evaluate students on. Yeah. Other questions? Yep.
So my understanding is that the belonging competencies is kind of a structure in order to integrate DJ principles into how you're able to teach and to make sure you're kind of touching bases. So this sounds like there'd be something separate from whether or not, say, a history lesson has some DEI aspects through it, because I know this is a lightning rod board, but like, the, whether or not this would be part of, like, what people would often call decolonizing the curriculum, because I'm sure, I know that our history teachers here are fantastic and are following the law and making sure that people are getting actual history boards and all. But I'm wondering how, is this completely separate from that? Or is that something that's being looked at as well, to have a more inclusive curriculum in the academic sense?
Yeah. So I, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I would say that it's the latter versus the decolonizing curriculum efforts. And once I do have a more solidified competency draft to show you all, I think you'll see that there's actually a lot of overlap with SEL, with some of the C3 curriculum for social studies, also counseling. So it's not just thinking about, I guess, history lessons or curriculum, but it is also thinking about just, are we embedding empathy? Are we teaching how to treat people with respect and recognize differences and things of that nature, if that makes sense? Yeah.
Just going to add to your point. Having the prior experience of working with Teachers College CPED, there's a professional program for educators, that effort that you described takes a lot of work to rework units of studies, for example, in humanities, with a culture-responsible lens, and so it's really trying to, in some ways, refine units to consider historical underpinnings or perspectives from students in front of you. And so I think that's something we need to talk about and haven't had a chance to really sit down with Suzanne and Rachel, but that takes time, and it's purposeful in terms of what it would mean to revisit units of study within English, within social studies, and kind of do that curriculum revision work over time. I hope that answers that.
Yeah. It was just a clarifying, like, question. So basically, this would be more teacher and their kind of like attitude in the classroom based than compared to like what they're asking from their students, or what they're actually, the lessons that they're imparting onto their students. It would be more kind of the attitude and the environment that they're kind of creating within that classroom. That's what, this is, is that the goal of this?
Yeah, it's part of that, and part of it is content, right? And thinking about, so I would say a lot of our social studies department, they'll probably read these and be like, I'm doing a lot of these, right? And I think maybe for some STEM courses, they might look at this of like, oh, how can I implement some diversity or diverse representation? Or how could I do more inclusive teaching practices or things of that nature? So I think it's more of a guide for them to think about their own teaching and their curriculum and content, and how to better shape it to, you know, add to students' learning. Does that make sense? So you're not going to be, like, evaluated, and the whole entire, like, curriculum's not going to be overturned. It's kind of like how we embed and integrate some SEL into our learning, but we don't have just like, well, sometimes we do have SEL lessons, actually, from the counselors. But yeah, it's not going to be something you're going to be, like, evaluated on.
So it's similar to sustainability. So the sustainability work has been around their goals, and, for example, one of them is life, I'll just say, climate action. That's one of the 17 goals of sustainability that have been identified. And the teacher leaders of the Sustainability Committee went out and did a data collection with all the teachers, where they said, okay, here are all of these different goals within sustainability. Do you see this? And this is what Rachel's talking about doing. Do you see climate action in any of the units of study that you do, or any, do you have that as part of any of the units of study? And the teachers went through and identified, yes, we do that with this activity in art when we do this, or we do this in ELA when we read this book, or we touch on it here in science, there's different places. And so it's really just to talk about all of these different goals that we have and identify where are we doing it, because we are doing it, and really just bring some. So this year, it's really about bringing, identifying what they are and getting people to think about where are we doing this, and are we doing this, and where are the gaps? Because, you know, with something like sustainability and all of the different goals that we have, we may decide that there's the gap with something like life on land. That might not be an area that we're really looking at at all. So that's the work the Sustainability Committee is doing now. Most of the, but I think that Rachel's point of you need to wait to see what the belonging goals are will really help to inform about what it will look like. And Stella will probably answer your questions that you have about what is it actually going to look like.
Yeah. I know it sounds like very abstract right now, but I do promise you, once you do see them, it's kind of, I think, going to demystify a lot of what we consider DEI for teaching. I think sometimes we view it as a heavy lift, and some of it is, but I think through these competencies, a lot of teachers are actually going to see themselves in this work more and see that they're actually doing a lot of this, and they might not even be considering it as DEI, if that makes sense. Other questions for the competencies? Okay. Two more goals. So our next one is sustaining and expanding safe spaces for students and adults, and I kind of announced that earlier. So I am going to be reconvening the bi-weekly high school pride and multicultural student spaces. Formerly, it was called BIPOC, but given the attendance of the variety of different students, I realized a name change was in order, and so multicultural just fits a bit better. Also, creating and co-leading a middle school multicultural space. I'm hoping to try and redo this with one of the counselors and the teachers at the middle school and institute that again. Facilitate quarterly parent and caregivers of LGBTQ+ and students of color or multicultural support spaces, as I previously announced. And then, we're going to continue to lead the monthly multi-stakeholder DIJ community group meetings, and hopefully do another annual belonging event. And so the eventual outcomes for this, I am hoping this will become more of a community-based effort, right, and filter out a bit more. So thinking about student and adult support spaces will increase in participation and engagement. engagement. I'm working with Jen Brown right now to advertise this on the site and kind of get the word out. So I know that was a piece of feedback I received last semester around just not, kind of having to search for it. And so I'm hoping this will get the word out a bit more. Students will experience a consistent support resource transitioning from middle school to the high school. So right now, we do have a middle school pride student space, but not a multicultural student space. And so hoping that we can cultivate that at the middle school, and then they'll see some sustaining and longevity of that in terms of support as they go into the high school. Students and adults will build communities, support networks, and sense of belonging in the district. And then the relationship between the district and the community at large will become stronger. That's the eventual outcome. Any questions around that one? Okay. Our last one, and this I've been doing, but we're going to maintain DIJ professional development opportunities for the district. So hopefully designing and offering a DIJ professional development session during at least one fall and spring teacher workshop day. We're limited on days, so I'm hoping, you know, we'll figure out and schedule some space. And then also, I've been talking with Dr. Shapps and doing some research, and I actually spoke with one of the co-directors from this organization. But I'm hoping to identify and confirm a group of educators to participate in the National SEED Project training. For those that are unaware of what it is, it is a teacher-founded and led program for teachers across the United States. They now have two kind of satellite campuses. And it's basically an intensive kind of cohort training session that we can identify two teachers or a few to go and learn together, learn how to facilitate dialogue, navigate difficult dilemmas, think about their own roles and their own identities and how that plays into teaching. And the goal is that they would come back with these skills and hopefully facilitate and lead this work with their other teachers. So it's kind of like a teach-the-teacher kind of program and investment, and hoping that will filter out to more faculty in the district. So eventual outcomes for that, district educators will advance their knowledge and skills of equity-based teaching practices, hopefully successfully complete SEED training and use these skills to educate and train their peers. And then equity and belonging will become an increased priority to educators in the district. So all of these, I hope you see, is a very collaborative effort. We're really trying to build the capacity of DEI or better belonging in the district and trying to identify ways to do that. Any questions about any of the goals? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the student representative.
So a few exciting updates from the student side. Clubs have started up, basically new as of this week. There are some new ones this year, including the BioBuilder Club and the Pickleball Club. You can kind of see what comes of those, as the club fair will be happening on October 2nd during Spirit Week. So that will give students an opportunity to kind of collectively see a physical, in-person representation of a lot of the clubs available to them. And that will hopefully increase a lot of that engagement in new and old clubs at the start of the year. Sustainability Club also during Spirit Week is doing their third-ever clothing swap on that Monday, which is very exciting. It's, it's been very successful in the past. A lot of students have been able to bring in their clothes that they're not using anymore and for free, they just swap with each other different items of clothing. So that has been, that has been great in the past. Class officers are also working hard on preparing for Spirit Week and the pep rally, which will take place the week of September 30th. And the themes have been decided for Spirit Week, with Monday being class colors and students dressing in different colors assigned to each class. Tuesday is an exciting new one, where the teacher-student swap, where students and teachers will swap attire for the day, dressing up as each other, essentially. Wednesday is going to be Decades Day, where each class will dress up according to a different decade. Thursday is Country vs. Country Club, where students can choose if they would like to dress, quote, "in their finest attire" or instead dress according to the Wild West. That's interesting. And Friday is going to be Oyster River Spirit Day, where freshmen and juniors will be going all out in white spirit, and sophomores and seniors will wear all blue spirit. The pep rally will also take place on that Spirit Day with a collection of like competitions organized around showcasing their school spirit. The Fall Play is also underway. It's going to be 39 steps, and auditions have been held with the play being scheduled to happen around November. And lastly, homecoming planning is also officially underway, and the theme has been decided. It is Atlantis, so kind of like an under-the-sea kind of theme. And students will also help create art for the dance. They're, they're asking for student help in creating art and decorations for the dance. And that will happen also on the last day of Spirit Week, Friday, October 4th. So yeah, a lot of exciting student body things coming up, but yeah, that's, that's what I have.
Well, I hope we don't get a lightning storm the night of the under-the-sea dance. Thank you very much. Finance committee? No report. All right. There is no unanimous consent agenda, so we will not be voting. I would now like to move to the discussion item, which is the policies that we're going to be going over. Denise?
Hello. So kind of a little bit of an unusual procedure, procedure tonight in terms of asking for both a first read, a second read, and adoption in the same meeting. And the reason for this is to comply with a new federal law. The policies that are in your packet have all been not only reviewed, but drawn up by the lawyer, you know, our lawyer to make sure it complies with the federal law. And so you will see a number of policies that are replacing some other similar ones. Some of them have been revised significantly, others not so much. But we are asking for both first read, second read, and adoption of these policies. So I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Just for clarification, first read, second read, and adoption does not prevent us from going back to revise these policies if we find that that's necessary at a later time?
We can always bring policies back later on. We definitely, because they were drawn up by the lawyers, policy committee didn't touch them. We, you know, we looked at everything and said, yeah, if this is what we have to be able to put in our policies in order to meet the requirements of the law, you know, this is, this is what we have. So, and, and again, you know, some relatively small changes, others more significant, but everything is in the packet.
I would first ask, oh, go ahead.
Just a background, Denise and I have been here the longest. We've done that before with policies just like this, that were, there's really nothing we can do to, to change these because there's so many legal requirements involved. So it's not really, it's, it doesn't happen that often, but it does happen from time to time. And this board has taken these up and done it all in one night, so.
Catherine?
Thank you. The other reason for this is that the law did change as of August 1st. And right now, we're in limbo because we have board policy that asks us to manage and investigate in one way, and the law tells us to do something different. So we were waiting patiently because the attorneys didn't really have a ton of time to vet these. So they took the time that they needed, so they didn't rush it. And the policies have just really come to us. But it's really puts us in a pickle if we get a complaint because we have board policy. It puts us in a little bit of a litigious situation of, of having to be in compliance with the law, but board policy is asking us to investigate this way. So that's also the reason for kind of pushing this forward in a little bit of a different way.
And to add to that, it requires assignment of certain responsibilities and titles within the policies. And so by your adoption tonight, it allows us to name individuals and take on those responsibilities as well.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes. So I would like to motion to approve the list of Title IX policies for first, second read and adoption and deleting, deletion of the existing policies. For first, second read and adoption, AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and affirmative action, ACAA, harassment of students, ACAB, harassment of employees, JIE, pregnant students. And then for deletion, existing, AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and the existing ACAA, harassment and sexual harassment of students, ACAB, harassment, sexual harassment of school employees, and ACAB-R1, sexual harassment report form.
Oh, so close. A second from Brian. Does anyone have any discussion on this motion? Go for it.
So one of the things, this may not be any different than the old one. The definition of the confidential employee, that says that's our LADAC. Is there anyone else in the district that would be a confidential employee? And are we also letting students know that everyone in the district is a mandated reporter?
So yes and yes. So the only current licensed clinical mental health counselor is our LADAC. So she is by law considered the only one by definition to meet that standard. The counselors and school psychologists do review this with students when they're establishing that relationship. I've seen signs in their offices that also have this information on there. They know of this additional new requirement with the pregnancy policy that you, that you've probably also reviewed. So they are also aware of this and making sure students are aware of it. So yes, our staff have, and faculty have all gone through the training, so they see the differences that are coming with, with this policy. So that, we only have one, one staff member.
The mental health counselor is not falling to the same category?
You're not certified as a licensed clinical health mental counselor. Her certification is different. So it's considered similar to a school psychologist or school counselor by definition of the law.
This is sort of tangential, but I know we made the change to the middle school and high school tip reporting system, that it was no longer anonymous. Is that still working? Is that process going the way where students, like, one, has there been a decrease in the complaints that are real, I guess? And has there been a chilling effect with having to put names on it? And then how has the system working and making sure that those complaints are elevated up the system to the appropriate reporting entity?
So as someone who sees all of them, I can tell you that it doesn't, we haven't done the numbers. We can do the numbers to tell you if they've decreased or not, but just, I can say that we are still getting them. And so I don't believe that it has a chilling effect by having the name of the individual on it, but we can look at those numbers. I feel like it's very effective. The way that it's been working is very effective. If there is something that needs to go to Catherine, it is getting to Catherine. If it needs to go to a counselor, it's getting to a counselor. If it needs to go, depending on who needs to know, that information is being shared with those people that need to know. So that, that communication, I think, has, is happening also.
I see a good reduction in the ones that kids were joking around with and abusing the system in a typical kind of kid way. So that has impacted the staffs of, you know, a better impact on the staff's availability to read these, because there were sometimes many, many, many that were just sort of, you know, joking around in the system. I do think the other piece of this is, which was helpful, is it was reviewed with all the students. So the middle school had an advisory where they went over this. They talked about the importance of being a reporter and being able to share your name and, and being that person who could potentially be an advocate for your friend or a witness for your friend. It also happened at the high school, where they met with the classes and reviewed all this as well. What I see is, when I'm reading some of these, is now we know who to go to and who to find. Some of them were written anonymously and didn't give us enough information. We were digging and looking for the student who's in this class, because they were a little bit arbitrary, some of them. So now we're really able to get to that student faster and figure out what's going on.
Catherine, I know with these updates, don't we have to put them in the student handbook?
Yes. They can, so they're online, so we'll be able to put the updated policy links, because what we've done is put the links in there. So we will, and then our, our website will be up.
I was sure if it was still paper or if it was, it was still online, which is good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Excellent. All in favor of the motion? Six in favor and the student rep in favor. Thank you very much for your help. All right. The school board committee updates.
This is related to the NHSBA meeting. Two things. One, I registered for it. Another person come if you'd like. You just, only one person gets to vote. So if you want to come, you can register and come. The second part is, is that the, the resolutions that were, the list that came from NHSBA that were, they approve or they recommend or do not recommend showed up on Monday. So if you look in your email, you should find it there. I haven't quite had a chance to look through all of them very carefully yet, because it only came in on Monday. But I will do so for the next one, but I suggest everybody does, so we can probably put it on the agenda for next time about how you want me to vote on them or any discussion thereof. With the policies that we submitted, the first one, though, was just a word change for turning word to emphasize public education. They did recommend that. Kelly is not English, it's just, she read it, with just some word changes. There are some complications with the one that we kind of co-sponsored with Hanover, where they changed the language of it. That one, I'm going to look at more carefully to find out whether or not it's as effective the second time around with the recommendations. And that's, so I really suggest everybody read that one. And then the third one was regarding the 306 regulations. And the last Board of Education meeting on August 14th did pass the 306 regulations in. So that one has been rendered moot, which was a possibility. However, I wanted to look at it still, because I have not seen the final draft of what the 306 regulations were, which means I think it's still a possibility that we could still want to disagree with what they are. But I haven't managed to yet find a copy of them. Dr. Shapps is making head gestures, so I don't know if he's seen it either. So I'll still look into that and hopefully have something to tell you guys in two weeks on, on that. That's an update.
Thank you.
So the wellness committee met yesterday, and as Suzanne talked about, we finalized the plans for the community dinner. Really excited. I think the, the last community dinner that we had done, where it was part of the Sustainability Club, where we had different organizations come, set up tables, and folks got to, you know, have their, their dinner and then walk around to the tables, we kind of envisioned something very, very similar. So I think it'll be a really great, great thing. The community dinner, I've had it in my head, so I'm putting it out there just to make sure that it's, it's known, is that it's going to be here at the middle school. And then it's on the same day as the high school open house. So those that need to go to the high school open house will go from middle school to the high school then. And Jen Brown is putting together the information flyer and has all kinds of various channels that she'll be pushing that out to very soon. And it'll be kind of a fall harvest-themed thing, so that will be great. And then one of the other things that the committee talked about was considerations around possibly doing a book study program, either something that's more internal to teachers and staff of the district, or even And it'll be kind of a fall harvest themed thing, so that will be great. And then one of the other things that the committee talked about was considerations around possibly doing a book study program, either something that's more internal to teachers and staff of the district, or even possibly opening it up to more of a community-wide book study. So that's something that the committee is going to weigh in on their interest and kind of pros and cons of where they see it might go. With that discussion around the book, we also were looking at possibly utilizing our wellness committee to support the district's, our school board goal around the cell phone policy, and how we might be able to assist with gathering some information, maybe getting some student input, but also looking at, you know, literature studies or research out there from, you know, other larger community groups that we can then bring back to the school board and help inform some of the information around our considerations related to the cell phone policy. So we got a lot done in 45 minutes. Any questions?
Is there going to be another sign-up for the community dinner?
Yes, the plan is to do another sign-up, just so they can get a general count and understand if there are any allergy and, you know, considerations related to food allergies.
Thank you. Denise?
Just, policy did meet last week, and the new Title IX policies was all that was on the agenda, so we'll meet next on October 10th and get back on our regular policies.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other committee updates? All right, thank you. Is anyone here for public comment? I see no one. All right, closing actions. Next meeting is in two weeks, but it is on Tuesday, October 1st, not the second, which is a Wednesday. It is on Tuesday. It will be at this building, the middle school. The second meeting in October will be on a Thursday, also not a Wednesday, and that will be at Mastway. Excellent. And then October 24th, we have a budget workshop scheduled for that day.
The revised is the 31st.
For what?
The budget workshop. It was in our packet.
Oh, yes, it does. Okay.
I thought it was the 24th, though.
I thought so also.
I believe the 31st, as we originally advertised to set the meeting, is the date. Suzanne, I mean, Wendy and I went over that today, and I think the original state of the 31st was accurate, and the calendar didn't reflect the date, and now we made the change. I think it's in the documentation. I'm pretty sure the calendar adjustment.
Is that going to cause a problem for anyone? Any of the board members?
I'll have to double-check.
The workshop being on the 31st.
Yeah, I have it here.
I am, what's the, I'm going to be away. Not quite sure, remembering what state I'm in that week, but I'm away that week.
Okay.
I traveled back on the 31st, but I won't be back until late in the evening.
Okay.
I'm not available on 31st either. I mean, I knew that from the get-go when this came out, so.
From the get-go, okay.
So when, I guess I'm just trying to catch up in terms of when the change was made. Do we have something, I feel like something did come out that said the 24?
The original invite, or the date, was the 31st. Then on the publication of the budget calendar, it had a different date, and then, so we made the correction to, so the notification or the date assigned was always the 31st. Information on the budget calendar was inaccurate. We've made that correction, and the date stayed the same. That helps.
All right, excellent. I would like to, I'm going to make a motion to temporarily adjourn the meeting to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Can I have a second for that motion? Brian? And this will just be a simple vote. All in favor? Six in favor. All right, thank you. The meeting is temporarily suspended. Adjourned.